Bob Van Heren, Nick Reed, Jim Bodenhammer, Susan Stockton.
Here.
Dwayne Allman.
Here.
Philip Frame.
Here.
Jennifer Baker.
Here.
Cory Manuel.
Here. Okay, the first item. Scott, are these the minutes ones you were talking about this afternoon?
Yes, those are. I emailed them out and everybody should have a printed copy there.
Okay, those minutes for your approval.
I'll make a motion to adopt them.
Susan Stockton.
Yes.
Nick Reed.
Yes.
Dwayne Allman.
Yes.
Philip Frame.
Yes.
Jennifer Baker.
Yes.
Cory Manuel.
Yes. All right, you've got some committee reports. Anyone has any questions about those? If not, let's move to old business, Roger.
It's an ordinance to amend Mount Home zoning ordinance to better address commercial building facades, to amend ordinance 1998-21, ordinance 720, and to repeal ordinance 2213.
Make the motion, we adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Jennifer Baker.
Yes.
Nick Reed.
Yes.
Philip Frame.
Yes.
Cory Manuel.
Yes.
Susan Stockton.
Yes.
Dwayne Allman.
No.
We're good?
We're good, yeah.
All right, thank you. Roger, let's go ahead and go to the second item, please.
It's an ordinance providing for the building parking lots, planning, shrubs, and landscape, and providing for permits for the construction thereof, updating Mount Home parking lot and landscape regulations, commending ordinance 2113, and repealing ordinance 9730.
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second. What happened, Phil? You lose us?
Yeah.
You had a blackout, didn't you?
Yeah.
He needs to help on technology stuff, I'll be glad.
So glad you're here, Roger.
Listen from Dave, his iPad too.
Nick Reed.
Yeah.
Susan Stockton.
Yes.
Dwayne Allman.
Yes.
Cory Manuel.
Yes.
Jennifer Baker.
Yes.
Philip Frame.
Yes.
All right, now you've got down to new business, and what we've got, the first one is it's time to get a resolution in front of you to levy the millage for the 25 assessment year, or 26, I believe.
And this is the same mill we've continued, as we don't have it, hasn't increased it at all. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Dwayne Allman.
Yes.
Cory Manuel.
Yes.
Nick Reed.
Yes.
Susan Stockton.
Yes.
Philip Frame.
Yes.
Jennifer Baker.
Yes.
All right, thank you. So, next item, new business. Roger?
Well, the city council, the city Mount Home did adopt a revised sign billboard and outdoor advertising structure ordinance on June 15, 2010, and again on December 19, 2019, and subsequently adopted several revisions to said ordinance at that time, and whereas the council of Mount Home has now adopted both tonight, the 2025 Mount Home billboard and outdoor advertising structure, and the 2025 Mount Home banner yard sign and temporary advertising sign ordinance, which are meant to replace the former ordinances addressing signs, billboards, and other outdoor advertising structures, therefore being ordained by the city of Mount Home, Arkansas, followed ordinances are repealed in their entirety, ordinance 2010-19, 2019-34, 2022-39, 2022-44, and 2023-28.
This is just a collection of all our old outdated sign ordinances, billboard ordinances, that we updated and replaced with the two we passed a month or two ago. So, I'm literally the only person in town that cares whether we have the old ones still on the books or not, but I also make the agenda and do the packet, so here we are. So, it just, it'll kill out the old ones and just leave us with the new ones.
I'll make a motion, suspend it until the second reading.
Jennifer Baker.
Yes.
Philip Frame.
Yes.
Nick Reed.
Yes.
Cory Manuel.
Yes.
Susan Stockton.
Yes.
Dwayne Allman.
Yes.
It's ordinance repealing ordinance is 2010-19, 2019-34, 2022-39, 2022-44, and 2023-28.
Motion to suspend it, we'll suspend it on third reading.
Second.
Nick Reed.
Yes.
Susan Stockton.
Yes.
Dwayne Allman.
Yes.
Philip Frame.
Yes.
Jennifer Baker.
Yes.
Cory Manuel.
Yes.
It's an ordinance repealing ordinance is 2010-19, 2019-34, 2022-39, 2022-44, and 2023-28.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Cory Manuel.
Yes.
Dwayne Allman.
Yes.
Susan Stockton.
Yes.
Nick Reed.
Yes.
Philip Frame.
Yes.
Jennifer Baker.
Yes.
All right, I think that gets us down to the last item of new business you've got in front of you. Scott, you got this in two of them, right? The first was a resolution...
Yes, we got one to waive the bidding and then the second one to actually sell it.
Okay, so let me explain a little bit to you, and I think Arnold's got some maps maybe that we can tell you about or show you in a minute, but we were approached by the owners of Arctic Heating and Air. They joined us down there, it's a soccer complex on the highway, and they've been maintaining, they've been maintaining for probably ever since Arctic moved down there, the property you see outlined in red, and it doesn't serve much purpose to us at all. And so what Arnold's come up with is that red line is a way to square it up. I think the survey is how many feet wide, Arnold, a little slither of that?
Probably about 70 foot wide.
Yeah, something like that. And...
Less than a quarter of an acre. Thousand square feet.
It squares it up there. We've still got plenty of room from that red line south to the driveway, right there, for anything. We've still got a nice buffer there, some woods, but these folks, ever since they've been down there, they've cleaned it up, they got rid of all the stuff that was there when we got the property years ago, and they want, there's a really, really nice concrete slab, I don't know if it's visible in that picture or not, but there that was there, and they park equipment on it right now, and they're willing to just pay us an amount of money that we think is very fair, and then they'll own that property, they want to put up a shed on it to keep their equipment in, basically do what they're doing now. They need to try to buy it before they can put anything up on it, and I don't think Daniel has a concern at all about losing a few feet of that property right there, that they don't even tend to really run that.
So, is the black part still ours?
That, the black is still ours, and between the red and the black on the south side and then on the, that'd be the west side, back towards the driveway into the soccer park, that, you know, when you turn in, you go, you can go north up by the field and the concession stands stuff, so that's that line right there, and that road right there, so.
Yeah, the black lines up there is our overall lot, is the way that those lines are. Towards the Arctic Commercial Building, that black line is our common property line with them at this point in time, to where we'll be, if this is all approved and everything, we're looking to sell on down to the red line right there.
And these folks reached out to us, I think the first time might have been last year, if I'm not mistaken, last fall, could have been early this spring, I don't remember. About every couple of months they'll call and say, have you found out? And I finally said, look, I just forget, and so the only way to get it done is put it in front of y'all and see if you're willing to sell it, and Arnold has got it surveyed off and legal description. If you approve it, then they'll get that in front of Roger.
And there's absolutely nobody else in the whole world that would buy it.
Wants it.
You know, I mean...
It's not a big enough piece of property to do any money.
And the concrete slab that the mayor was bringing up and everything, that's that, what you can see, kind of like a vehicle right now, or something parked up there on that black line, that is that concrete slab right there in that picture.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Dwayne Allman.
Yes.
Nick Reed.
Yes.
Susan Stockton.
Yes.
Cory Manuel.
Yes.
Philip Frame.
Yes.
Jennifer Baker.
Yes.
All right, now the next item is the actual resolution to approve the sale of it at a price of $5,000. It's in there that we need to approve.
I'll make a motion to adopt that resolution.
Second.
Philip Frame.
Yes.
Jennifer Baker.
Yes.
Nick Reed.
Yes.
Cory Manuel.
Yes.
Susan Stockton.
Yes.
Dwayne Allman.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll get the stuff that Arnold will give, and we'll get ready to do that. Yeah, I know I can see to my right over here Jennifer's got an announcement, so I'm gonna yield to her first, because I know she's got something in front of her, she has one here. She's gotta hide them better, Jennifer.
No, that way I don't forget. Okay, so this Saturday the Max Planck Historical Society is having a spaghetti fundraiser dinner that's being cooked by Lisa House, who I guess is quite famous for her spaghetti. Tickets are $15, you can get them at the door. It's 5:00 to 7:00 at the Elks Lodge. In addition, we have 20 different baskets for drawings. You buy a $5 ticket, put it in the jar in front of the basket you're interested in, and we'll pull it out at the end of the night. The baskets vary in prices from $30 to $400, so somebody's gonna get a really good deal. We even have an original print by Dwayne Haydo. Anyway, so come out and support the Historical Society, have some good meal. If you don't, you don't have to eat to participate in the basket drawing, you don't have to do the basket drawing, you want to eat, we have to-go boxes if you want to take it with you, so.
So, I'm gonna give you an option, doesn't matter to me, I've seen it a couple times today, but I've got a movie available, if y'all want to see a little short video, just a couple, get this together. I forgot it was in my pocket, put that in, and there's gonna be five little bitty real short videos on there, five or six, I can't remember. Six, isn't it, Daniel?
So, it's not a grand job.
So, what you do, Scott, we won't start off, we won't start off with building C.
Okay.
We're gonna work our way down.
All right, I got you.
Right there. Chance made this video for us to kind of give us an update, something we can show of where we're at out there right now. I had a lunch meeting today with some folks, and we had input to dump, okay, there you go. Oh.
Is this it?
Wow.
That's the main entry into the condenser there as you go in. There's stuff upstairs, what you can see to the left here, the meeting rooms that we've often talked about. He tried to go in and out of some of the rooms, and we found out he had some issues flying a drone, making it off the wall, broke the wing, so we need to get inside every little room. This is, uh...
The other side of it.
Yeah, that's upstairs, that's another picture of one of the meeting rooms right there. He takes that, I think goes back downstairs. To the right here is where Roger will spend most of his time, this is the weight room.
And it was Scott, right?
Yeah, and the entire back of this place is glass, so everywhere in it, if you're in the hallway or upstairs, to the left here where that transformer's sitting, that is the little cafe space that we're looking at right now. This room on the left he just passed is the, you'll look in, what do you call it, Daniel, yoga dance?
Rubbish room.
Rubbish room. That's the place Roger and I'll never paint. So, let's go to A, Scott.
All right.
A. There's, this is the indoor aquatic space. Six panels on the roof on each side, they're partially open. There are glass doors on the side, some of them are open in this picture that you can see some of it, it's real dark, you have problems seeing through some of them. That's because of that two pieces of that glass, so if you can get it through. If he can get it through here, we're gonna go right through this door right here. So, there's the competition pool.
Wow.
Daniel, up above that right there is where the...
LED board.
Yeah, the LED board for the Colorado Timing System. They've already got the end walls playing, if the sidewall they're priming, getting ready to paint it. This middle pool here, that's a one-foot-deep kitty waiting pool, and then this is one where Roger and I'll be spending time on the ladder here, is the therapy pool right here.
Some of us are waiting.
Eddie's already going in there. We caught him out there the other day in a wheelchair traffic. All right, let's go to B. Uh, this is the area that's got pool party rooms, a concession stand, and one that opens out to the pool deck, and then one that'll open inside to the hallway. This room right here, when he gets us by that electrical control box there, you're gonna see some pieces of stuff in there, it's not all in there. This is what makes things go so slow, is all of the conduit, and there's already filters, pumps, and some of that equipment outside that's in there in place, and then we'll go down this hallway here. So, right there, that window there on the left there, that's a concession, all that's your pool party rooms to the left, right there.
D.
D. This building here, they're finished painting, doing finished paintwork inside it right now. Uh, you got a lot of stuff stored in it now that the contractors are using it for storage, basically. So, those are the final coats paint on some of that, that's your upstairs, that's where I'll be spending most of my time, that exercise bike right there.
I thought it was the coffee, coffee room.
Yeah, coffee, Eddie or Daniel, we want a coffee pot right there. And you've got the three basketball court, the equipment's already hung for the goals, the curtains, and all that kind of stuff's already in place. I like this guy, plays it to trouble.
The only one that did it.
No, there's another one, you know, you didn't see it when it went in. They go to outdoor pools.
Wow.
And all that, that, in between the pools and everything you see, setting those grades and those drains, that's the street department out there, and I'm gonna tell you something, that's our ability to use those people out there is a huge help in this process. Arnold and Steve, and the people they got going out there every day, setting that stuff up, it's, it's really a big boost to us. There should be one more, and that's that project overview. That's just up above, you're gonna get to see them all the way around the thing.
That's quite a project. Beautiful.
Lot, lot of activity going on out there. Now, three days this week, they had over 70 people on the job site.
Oh my gosh.
You know?
Will any of these videos be on our website?
Not right now. We got a little cleanup to do on some of the video stuff.
This one would be good, I mean...
Well, there's pieces of it that'd be good. We're gonna, this is our first attempt, or Chance's first attempt.
Leaving a picture like that, right there.
Yeah, but here's a piece of that that we got to get cleaned up a little bit, so we'll do that as soon as we can get it tuned up a little bit, right there, so.
Wow, that's amazing.
Yeah, it is. Things are going the right way out there. They've got a ways to go.
Everything's on track and on schedule.
Yes, ma'am.
It's the street department.
We're on schedule for some day, aren't we, or Dan? We just don't know what day that is. All right, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Sounds good.
Call in favor. All in favor?
Aye.